October 9th, 2012, meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education. Dr. Cash, will you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Please stand.
We do have Spanish translation available for this evening's meeting, Ms. Lamont.
Tenemos traducción en español para cualquier persona que necesite traducción. Tenemos aquí a Teresa Lewis que las puede asistir, gracias.
Thank you, and we also have headsets available for the hearing impaired. Dr. Cash, we'll now move on to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Thank you very much, President Deacon. Want to thank Teresa Lewis for being here tonight. I look forward to being at San Marcos in the very near future as we recognize, I think, thirty-nine students who will be reclassified, English learners, and that'll be a wonderful celebration at San Marcos High School. And I know she has a lot to do with that and her role there. I wanted to share with you, as you board members are aware, and I'm hopeful more and more members of our community are, the Common Core State Standards are just on our doorstep, they're just happening. And one of the most significant components of the Common Core State Standards are the assessments that will be utilized by our schools to determine students' knowledge. And Smarter Balance is the consortium that has created the assessments, and they released some sample items today. And they're very, very different than what we have, and I thought it would be interesting to give you two of the sample items. The first one comes from high school mathematics, and I'll just read it to you. And this is for probably ninth-grade students. "The two-second rule is used by a driver who wants to maintain a safe following distance at any speed. A driver must count two seconds from when the car in front of him or her passes a fixed point, such as a tree, until the driver passes the same fixed point. Drivers use this rule to determine the minimum distance to follow a car traveling at the same speed. Diagram representing this distance is shown, and it has a picture of two trees and a car traveling between them." And here comes the question. "As the speed of the cars increase, the minimum following distance also increases. Explain how the two-second rule leads to a greater minimum following distance as the speed of the cars increases. As part of your explanation, include the minimum following distances in feet for cars traveling at thirty miles per hour and sixty miles per hour." Incredible question, requiring not only the understanding of mathematical concepts, but being able to apply them to a real-world situation that all of us face every day when we drive in our cars. Another one from English Language Arts is for grade six, and it has students read some text and then complete the task that follows it. And the text is titled, "Cell Phones in School: Yes or No?" And then below it is a list of items that would, somebody might argue were for good reasons, and some that might argue that were not good reasons. And then the question for the student is, "Based on what you read in the text, do you think cell phones should be allowed in schools? Using the list provided in the text, write a paragraph arguing why your position is more reasonable than the opposing position." I mean, just a dramatically different approach to assessing student learning. It'll be fun to roll this out.
And what grade were those questions for, again?
The first one was ninth grade.
Ninth grade.
And the second one was sixth grade.
Maybe it'll make them better drivers, too. So there's lots of benefits there.
Absolutely. I did want to tell you that many of us were able to see, and the community as well, the ribbon-cutting at Santa Barbara High School for the cafeterias, celebrating the completion of the high school's renovation. And I learned a very valuable lesson there at the cafeteria, and that's, there's no such thing as a former dawn. I also learned that that school now has an awesome place for kids to gather, congregate, eat healthy and nutritious food, and we expect more of the students at Santa Barbara High to be there each and every day during the lunchtime. San Marcos Health Careers Academy also had their open house, which was wonderful. And I continue to hear positive comments from all of the community about that great transformation that's occurred for the facility on the corner of Patterson, or Turnpike and Hollister, excuse me. And both of those projects, again, were made possible as a result of Measure Q-2010 bond funds. Tomorrow, there'll be a rally for Measures A and B. Participants will gather in the grassy area in front of the Santa Barbara Public Library at 345 March Downstate Street to De La Guerra Plaza, where the rally will take place. The march and the rally are organized by the Santa Barbara Education Foundation. I also want to comment on the strategic plan. We've had two public meetings so far, one at Dos Pueblos High School, one at Santa Barbara High School. And Thursday, October 11th, we'll have our final community meeting at San Marcos High School. It begins at six, and I continue to welcome the feedback that has come in from the community. And last night at Santa Barbara High was no different, got some great input from the community on ideas and general comments regarding the strategic plan. This weekend, we're going to recognize this gentleman right here, Emilio Handel, as one of the Hope Award recipients, along with the Women's Fund of Santa Barbara. That's going to take place at, at...
Greek Orthodox Church.
The Greek Orthodox Church, thank you. And tickets can be arranged through the Santa Barbara Ed Foundation. And the last thing that I'll say is, a really interesting event is just about underway, and that is the Dos Pueblos High School mock trial team is headed to New York on October 23rd. There were only one of two teams in the state to be invited to this Empire City Invitational, and they're preparing to argue a fictional case that was actually based on an actual lawsuit. And I would love to have that team come back to a board meeting sometime upon their return, either December, January, and give the board a full report on their experience. And finally, I would say college nights are happening. Santa Barbara High's was on October 4th. San Marcos High School's college night was October 8th. And Dos Pueblos College Night is tomorrow night at 6:30 PM. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. We are now moving on to donations, and do we have a motion regarding donations?
I'll move, acknowledge the donations, accept them, and with gratitude.
Second?
All those in favor.
With one question.
Yes, Mr. Heron?
What is the Dream Big System?
Oh, the Dream Big System is a, an opportunity for students to begin seeing what they might be doing in the future in elementary schools, like ideas that they may have as the kind of life they'd like to leave based upon the career they might have. It's a series of kind of scrapbooks that students put together that are visual demonstrations of their dreams for the future. At secondary schools, it probably will be part of the career explorations class that students are taking.
Because we did get $22,000 worth of donations for that, which is fantastic.
Yes.
So, nice, I, thank you.
And before we vote on this, I just want to note that Mrs. Parker had a prior commitment this evening and won't be here, so when we're voting this evening, it will, there will be four of us voting. So, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion passes, four zero. We're now moving on to item E, Board Comments and Correspondence. Board members? Anything you'd like to share?
A few things. Dr. Cash mentioned the high school cafeteria and the Health Academy, and as I've done over four years, I've tried to acknowledge sometimes when we have what I feel just fantastic coverage. And the local Center of News Press had good articles on both of those in detail, and I just appreciate the coverage, and especially when it has to do with our bond funds, because the more the public can see what we are doing with their money, and we can thank them, I think the better off we are. So, we get good coverage on our things from all the entities, but this one, to me, was a little bit more special at this given time, so again, thank you to the Center of News Press. I had the great honor, privilege of getting up at six o'clock in the morning Saturday and heading to Royal Borough Beach. And Luccumber was having their fifth annual Carpe Diem session, which I had no idea what it was. I thought I could meander in and take part, and what I found out is, at 6:15, all the seventh graders lined up looking at the ocean, not all of them, but a huge number of them, in the Core Knowledge Program, and their big buddy, eighth grader stands behind them, and all week they've been getting nice things from their big buddy. And so they get a chance to bond and talk with each other, and then three teachers, and they count down, they dash into the ocean, and at 6:15 in the morning. It was quite a sight to see that bonding going on, and then the parents are there, then they come out and they light candles, and just a nice atmosphere. And there's all sorts of food for the kids and the parents. It was just a nice way to start a Saturday morning. I also was able to go to Washington to their fifth annual Echo Carnival. And it was a one-to-four on last Saturday, and they all, it was all, everything that is consumed is, none of it goes to waste. I mean, they recycle everything, and so it's really all about the ecology. And I got the biggest kick out of the twenty-four-foot rock climb, to see these kids eager to climb this, this big column of, like a rock climb. And I was amazed that the girls got to the top easily, quietly and consistently and step by step. I think the boys were more interested in falling. They, they got close to the top and said, "Yeah, I'm not going to go, I'm going to fall." And the boys were falling, the girls were dutifully going up to the top. It was an interesting thing to see, and the parents were really happy there, and it was very nice. I was happy to read, I went to Cleveland School early in the morning and saw the cleanup going on at Cleveland, and I didn't know it, but I have now read about it. Four churches got together and provided some hundred-and-twenty volunteers to completely redo a lot of the campus. They were working on benches, they were working on the gardens, they were working in classrooms, helping the teachers. It was just a big effort, and I hate to politicize it, but if I drove up, I saw one person loading a wheelbarrow with mulch. Everybody else was inside eating. And I parked and walked over to the one guy, and it turns out to be Dallas Williams, and he was, he was working up a sweat, just loading mulch into wheelbarrows, which I thought was pretty impressive. I enjoyed that. And then I would also then just like to honor and thank Jonas Pascito, the Dark, the Duxley Awareness and Resource Center has closed, and Joan has spent twenty-one years helping our children. And in the process of closing, she did donate all of her books, her entire library, to the district. And I'm hoping that some point, we can have that library available to our students and parents, because it's a wealth of information, and Joan has done a yeoman's job over twenty-one years dedicated to helping kids. So, I appreciate it very much, what she did, and wish her well in her retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Heron. Any other board member have comments? Ms. Lamont?
Well, the only thing I will say is that I spent the weekend down in Del Mar with other school board members for the California Latino School Board Association meeting. And besides getting great information, getting legislative updates, I am also, I've assumed a new position with the statewide organization as, on the Board of Directors for the California Latino School Board Association, so I'm really looking forward to bringing the resources and also the ability to network with statewide groups to this district. I think this is the first time we've had any representative on that statewide organization, so excited to be able to do that for our students.
Well, and I think I can speak for the whole board in saying how much we appreciate you doing that, and the benefits that will come to our district are fantastic, so thank you for that and for what you will bring. I would just like to note that, as you all know, there is, there are four candidates running for the school board this November 6th, and two of them are with us here this evening, Mr. Heron, who's an incumbent, and I see Pedro Paz in the audience as well. So, thank you for coming and attending our meeting this evening. Moving on now to announcement of closed session action on item B1, Public Employee Performance Evaluation Superintendent, we have nothing to report out. Item B2, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal or Release, nothing to report out. And item B3, Public Employee Appointment Assistant Superintendent Special Education, nothing to report. Which takes us now to public comment. Ms. Lamont, do we have any public comment?
We do have public comment. Jorge Uribe.
Hi, my name is Jorge Uribe, and I just like, would like to kind of follow up on our mediation meeting that we're having with the district. You know, a lot of the conversation back and forth between the district and ourselves, you guys said that you guys aren't supposed to pay for attorney's fees, but if you look at the first letter, you know, it's not our fault because of the district's negligence, not being ready for a IP meeting, when we brought our attorney to that meeting, even though our attorney had talked to you guys' attorney and made sure that you guys would be ready, we show up to the meeting with our attorney, and the district is not ready. If you follow up on that letter, you can read more about it, and I have a couple more informations in that. So, I just want to find out, you know, what will the district do in light of this information? I also got a copy of my son's ICUM files. In going through it, I noticed there's a lot of irregularities, a lot of breach of confidentiality between the district and doctors, and between seven other people that were involved, that the district got in touch with them before getting authorization to do so. So, I just want you to make light of that, and, you know, if you guys want to get back to me whenever it's convenient for you guys, I'll be waiting patiently. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Sure.
Sure.
But you need to submit it right now, because we're just finishing up a public comment.
That is, that's the right form, that's the new form. Mr. Locke?
Thank you, my name is Kenneth Locke. I've gone before the city council the past couple weeks and mentioned to them some work that I'm doing. I mean, I did a video, I put up on YouTube, it's called Mind Body Fitness. And when it comes to mental health and then also physical health, I'm actually bringing kind of a standard to the table. So, the idea of when a person is mentally healthy, they are also physically healthy. And when it comes to, say, physical ed, I think I'm providing the means for the kids to actually to apply physics to physical ed in relation to exercise through the means of tennis. And also, I did a video, just a demonstration in relation to my ability. I can actually, I have a video where I actually have two rackets, and I actually can hit two forehands, two backhands, two serves correctly. Then, let's see, in relation to the physics. And historically, we haven't had a teacher like myself that could have passed along that knowledge, so that, say, the likes of Roger Federer, who's like the number-one tennis player. I'm sorry to say that Roger hasn't received an education that now I can provide him, as well as I can provide the kids at Santa Barbara, through the Santa Barbara School System. And I think it would be important, because I have to explain that, say, the likes of a Roger Federer, physically, he's not actually fit. You think that he's fit because he's fit, because he can, he can win, but that's not physical fitness. It's when his whole body, holistic health, whole body, what I'm bringing to the table is ambidextrous, and then the whole basis of the mind-body integration. I'm sorry to say that, again, Roger, when it comes to his relationship with, say, his body or his physique, it's, it's not healthy. And then when it comes to mental health, mental health, we can actually understand in relation to him being intelligent, or becoming intelligent, to where he actually understands the physics of how to hit a tennis ball.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. The, but again, he hasn't had a teacher to teach him the physics, and what's happened is, is that the mental illness, he actually suffers from delusions of grandeur type of situation, because his success is actually isn't really a true success from my perspective. Just thought I'd pass that along to you. My project's called Tennis Science, the Renaissance in Tennis, and I have the address tennisscience.net. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, and we will now move on to the consent agenda. Board members, are there items you would like to pull and for us to return to later this evening? Any items?
I would just like to note that I will be abstaining from the personnelist, the approval of the personnelist.
And I actually have a quick question on item G8, so maybe we'll come back to that at the end. All right, so why don't we take these separately then, Ms. Lamont, since you're abstaining from the personnel item? Do I have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda?
Someone?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion passes, four zero. And now we will, do we have a motion for the personnel item?
Move to approve item G11?
Second? I think it's...
G11?
Yes.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Staying. Motion passes three with one abstention, three, one with one abstention. All right. And we do have a time certain at seven o'clock. We're very close to that. Item, this is item H1. And so I think that I'm going to stall for about one minute, so that we can go ahead and take that item. And, excuse me, do you have two minutes? Ah, okay. Well, I'm not sure if there's anything else we can do here in two minutes.
Oh, yeah, do you want to do?
Sure, that's a good idea.
G8.
All right. So, my question, I guess, Dr. Drouet, this would be for you on G8, which has to do about the approval of the memorandum of understanding between our district and the Regional Occupation Program for Career Technical Education. I noticed that the contract is for one-hundred-and-seventy-five days, that they're paying their portion of that, and there was mention that we would renegotiate, I suppose if Prop 30 passes and we, our school year goes back to one-hundred-and-eighty days, but I just wanted to make sure that there would be the funding available through ROP to pay that additional amount.
You know what? That's a question I haven't discussed with ROP, to be able to do that, but I can't actually...
Okay, and I'm sorry to spring this on you, I should have asked earlier, because I, I guess I was assuming that, with the understanding that we were at one-seventy-five, if we went to one-eighty, that they would have the additional funding.
Well, I'm going to guess that they will. My communication with the ROP, with Jan Clevenger, has been, it's been fantastic. They've recognized that we have a smaller work here this year as a result of the furlough days. And I, my, their funding formula did not change. So, my belief is, while we don't have, as Dr. Drouet says, we haven't asked them directly that question, that the funding is there to cover the additional days.
Okay, all right. Thank you, and again, I should have asked you that sooner. Okay, well, do we have a motion on G8 then?
Move approval of G8.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion of no. Motion passes, four zero. Thank you. Okay, now, I believe we can move on to item H. And we have the Notice of Public Hearing and Approval of Resolution Number Twenty, sorry, 12-1320 regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for traditional calendar schools. So, I'm going to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing, and do we have any comments?
We do not have any public comment.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and reopen the regular session. And is there any discussion board, or do I have a motion?
I will move to approve, let's see, Resolution Number 12/1320 regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for traditional calendar schools.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion passes, four zero. Which brings us to our conference agenda, and the first item on this agenda this evening is the Discussion of Proposed Agreement between Santa Barbara Unified School District and the Lawrence Hall of Science for the 2012-13 school year. Mr. Handel?
As you may recall, back in September of this previous year, we had a board update on the Elementary Science Education Initiative that we started back in 2010. In May and June of 2010, we had a group of kindergarten teachers that received a foundational science training, so that our students in K through six would be prepared, not just for secondary, but beyond in terms of STEM knowledge. Part of the plan was to train the following year in 10, 11 grades, teachers in grades one, three, and five, and then last year in grades two, four, and six. Part of the strategic plan going forward after this training is developing a more collaborative approach, one that perhaps could replicate what they're doing up in San Francisco with the Bayside Initiative. What we will bring forward at our next board meeting for consent item is a, a contract with Lawrence Hall, working with consultants from the Lawrence Hall of Science in the University of California Berkeley, to develop a more detailed plan going forward, bringing together district administrators, teachers, higher ed representation, and other, hopefully, businesses throughout the community to help us develop a better plan going forward in science.
That sounds really promising, and I'm sure board members probably have some questions. Would anyone like to dive in? I have some, but...
Go ahead, because...
Okay. Well, first of all, could you elaborate a little bit more on this, is it's the Bayside Initiative?
Yes.
Could you tell us a little bit more what that looks like?
The Bayside Initiative is a collaborative between the school districts, higher education, the universities, obviously, and the San Francisco Bay Area, other, like, engineering companies and science companies in the area, doing work together, driving what students need to know in science, and developing not just the teacher's skills, but the student's skills as they go through kindergarten through sixth grade. It's been quite a leap forward for that district in that area, simply because as these cuts have been coming and the implementation of the CST, the California State Standards, it's been more of a focus on language arts and math, obviously, and it's kind of pushed science off to the side. What we're seeing now is this Renaissance, if you will, and wanting to incorporate all the different areas and ensure that our students are prepared for life beyond high school, that prepared for the 21st century in terms of science, technology, engineering, and math. This group, as a collaborative, are working together to provide students with great instruction, great exposure to different jobs and mentors and higher education opportunities, so that students understand what's out there in the field of science, technology, engineering, and math.
And this will involve training teachers?
Yes.
And is this done through professional development? How is it funded?
It's professional development, and they work with private, private donors. Here in Santa Barbara, we were lucky enough to get a private donation through the Wharton Foundation, gave us the seed money to, to begin this process. It was a, it was a donation of roughly $50,000 to bring these consultants to Santa Barbara to help us develop a more comprehensive plan, and one that we hope can be to the, to the standard of what they have out there in Bayside. We want to increase science literacy, it's obviously a need that we have, and we think that's the next step for what we're offering here in Santa Barbara.
I, I think that's great, because I think probably most elementary school teachers do not come necessarily as science majors. necessarily as science majors when they become teachers.
Right.
And that's an area where some of them may not feel as comfortable and as well-prepared as they might be, say, in math or language arts. And I think disciplines like physics really kind of scare people just by the name of it, but in fact, elementary-age children love to figure out how things work, and they are natural sponges when it comes for things like what is gravity and what are forces and what is matter and all of that. And so I think it's not too soon to do this. We're really ready for this.
Absolutely not.
I did have a question about the Common Core standards, too, because I know they haven't yet been released or even fully developed, I guess, for science. So how do we anticipate planning for that?
Well, since we are in the planning process, that'll give us time as we're developing our plan with the release of the science Common Core standards to incorporate that. And obviously, that's going to be the foundation of what we're doing and how we're doing it. And getting back to what you said about the kindergarten piece and the elementary piece, we're seeing now in schools, my former school, McKinley, where we're really diving into science, and we're seeing that engagement with the students, and they're so excited to be doing all the different projects, all of the different labs. It's real exciting to see. The Science Matters Initiative that ended back in two thousand, excuse me, that was initiative of grades four through six back in 2010 really kick-started this movement locally to get more science into our schools. And I'm really excited with this plan, and I'm looking forward to what comes out of these meetings and this consulting with the Lawrence Hall of Science.
Mr. Heron?
Yeah, you indicated that this will be on our agenda, next meeting on a consent calendar.
Yes.
Can, is there any information you can put in a board brief that describes more fully what you're talking about?
In terms of?
Just information, what you're saying right now, but.
We can put information about the Bayside project.
Just the whole thing, yeah.
Absolutely.
Lay it all out.
We can include that, yes.
Thank you.
And I'd actually maybe like to follow up. I wonder what it would be like to actually bring it for an action item, only because I'd like to see what this looks like. I think this sounds great, but I don't, I'm having a hard time envisioning what it looks like in a classroom, what kind of project. So obviously, you can't give us examples of everything, but I just did a really quick search for Bayside initiatives and had a little bit of a hard time finding the exact one you're talking about.
Okay.
So perhaps an action item with just a little bit more information, maybe just three highlights that are unique to this particular program as opposed to other STEM programs in our district.
We can do that.
And since we do have two science consultants now, it would be nice to know how, what their role will be in this process.
They'll be prepared for a presentation.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Okay, so we look forward to that, and I'm really pleased we're moving forward on science because it's an area that we really need to spend more time on.
I agree.
Especially at the elementary level. All right, we're now moving on to discussion of proposed professional development partnership between our district and Antioch University and specifically in our district, the Open Alternative School.
Antioch University has approached Open Alternative School, and I'm glad to see Principal Karen McDonald here with us tonight, to allow, well, to form a partnership to allow some of the practicums for psychologists to use the Open Alternative students and the site as a place where they can not only hone their skills and develop their skills, but also provide services to students in the area of mental health.
Any questions, Ms. Limons?
I was just curious, how so? How, I mean?
Well, everything from assessments to psychoanalysis to counseling services, those are the types of things that they'll be honing their skills at. It's part of a doctoral program that will, again, provide students some services and the university the opportunity to practice and hone their skills.
And do we have that type of relationship with any other university that's doing that with some of our sites?
Not in the psychology field, but, I mean, we have these types of contracts with universities in terms of teachers, and we help develop their teachers. Same philosophy.
Do you anticipate that there will be anything unique with the psychological aspect versus the teaching, something legally that we need to think about, maybe different, do we think about?
Yes, there's obviously, there's going to be a lot of confidentiality, things that we're going to be putting in place to ensure that none of the students are exposed to anything they shouldn't be, or we're doing things with them that we shouldn't be in terms of assessment or information being released.
How did we settle on O A S? What was the decision-making process for that?
Well, actually, Antioch approached O A S from my understanding. Is that correct, Karen? Can you give us a little more information on that?
Do you want to come up to the podium? Thank you, just because we're recorded, and so we would like to get your comments on the audio portion.
I think that, can you hear me? Okay. I think Dr. Cash might be able to speak a little bit clearer to that, but Mary Ann Caston, she's the director of teacher ed in that department, she went to her head of her department of the university, and they met with Dr. Cash and did a proposal last year. So it was all kind of in the works before I arrived on the scene. What we've done so far, we are setting up a lab, a classroom, that's a professional development learning lab, where our teachers, all the district teachers eventually will be invited to participate in discussions and in sessions that will enrich their lives in teaching math. That's the main focus this year, as well as we have student teachers as well that are in our, that are presently at our site, that they hold their classes there at O A S as well. So we're meeting a lot of the strategic plan that the school board has lined out with, you know, making those community connections, using our sites for beyond the school day. But Dr. Cash can speak a little bit more to the intent of the beginnings of what the partnership was to look like.
Dr. Cash?
Sure. Dr. Caston, Mary Ann Caston, and I have known each other for many years. And when I spoke to her, it was, I think it was probably a week after I had been at a parent meeting at O A S, and we started talking about, well, what are some of the services that Antioch can bring to the table to support students in our district and our schools? And she had kind of a philosophical affinity to O A S's kind of grounded philosophy in alternative education, and really felt that she could bring the resources of Antioch University, coupled with the resources currently at O A S, and really do some great things, not just in teaching, but also in the area of mental health as well. And, you know, it's the same but different than what UCSB is doing at Harding. It's, the construct is the same. It's the idea of having an institute of higher education, Antioch, be part, kind of working shoulder to shoulder with one of our schools, and improving the practice of our professionals at the school while at the same time informing the university of promising practices, while, most importantly, improving the lives of the students at the school. And Dr. Caston is, I think, a forward-leaning educator, and typically has, if she says she's going to do something, typically she follows through and makes it happen. So it was, I thought, a very promising partnership, and I was excited about its potential and didn't know much more about it kind of coming through until just recently when Mr. Handel and I spoke about that there was actually an agreement that had been drafted, and I was very excited that we were gonna, maybe something good was really gonna actually happen in that partnership. So I think it's a great opportunity for the O A S community and Antioch.
Do we have public comment, Ms. Limons?
Yes.
We do have a public comment, and first up is Gloria Leggett. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Hello, my name's Gloria Leggett, and I just wanted to speak. So much in favor of this. I happen to have been on the parent group that, I don't want to even, years ago, that started O A S. And I have four kids, and three of them went through many of the years. One, my son who's forty-two, went from kindergarten through eighth grade at O A S. So I've spent my time there, and now I find that I have grandchildren there. So I am still there as and now as a grandparent. And there are other people at school who are grandparents, and we say, oh, my goodness, can you believe we're still here at parent meetings and still doing the same things? And I also happen to teach at Antioch. I'm on the, in the Education Department and the adjunct faculty. And so I see my student teachers every year in different places, and sometimes they're, they are at O A S, and I see how, what a perfect fit that is for the student teachers to be at Open Alternative. So I'm thrilled. I'm not sure whether I'm more thrilled for O A S or Antioch to have this partnership. And I was there today, working in this wonderful room that's been set up, and looking at all the manipulatives and wonderful math stuff going on, and the kids are excited about what's happening, and working with Mary Ann's wonderful and the student teachers. So I would encourage you to encourage us to do this because it's a really good partnership. It's a perfect fit. And I see how much the student teachers already are getting out of the program and how much our O A S kids. So as a grandma there, I'm really encouraging this, and I think it's going to be a wonderful partnership.
Thank you. Next, we have Salvador Trevino.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Dr. Salvador Trevino. I'm a psychologist. I'm also the director of practicum for Antioch University's doctoral program in clinical psychology. I want to offer a correction, and the proposal is not to do psychoanalysis. That's an entirely different discipline. But our proposal is to provide mental health services, individual psychotherapy, family therapy, maybe running some groups, to be available also to do some mental health assessments, but certainly not to replace the psychoeducational assessments that school psychologists do. We would work cooperatively with the school psychologist, and these are doctoral students who are on track to go into career in professional psychology. And this would be an excellent opportunity for our students to develop their skills while at the same time helping the school district meet some of the needs that have been, that will be identified by faculty, by school psychologists, by the principals, students that may need a little bit extra help, and we would be available to do that.
Thank you. And Mary Ann Caston, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm really sorry that I wasn't here at the very beginning of this presentation. I really want it to be, but I was teaching in the classroom out at O A S that is now set up as a professional development lab specifically for mathematics right now, but it can also be turned into for science or any other content area. I want to encourage the board to approve this proposal because I believe that it's an excellent opportunity for community, communities working together. Antioch wants to work more with the community, and there is no better place than O A S, which is a match for us philosophically as far as our educational goals are concerned. And we are a very progressive organization. O A S has always been a progressive organization, and I think what the parents want for their children and what we are looking for in terms of our student teachers and our clinical practitioners, having an opportunity to work in a setting like O A S is going to be very, very good for everyone. So I also want to say one more thing because professional development schools are the new way teacher education is being enacted. And if you read the new report that came out of State Superintendent Torleksen's office, they're recommending more time in the field to work in classrooms, and that's what this opportunity gives us, is a place for us to work in the field in a deep way so that the teachers and the student teachers and the supervisors, I'm supervisor right now, can actually explore their professional practice so that everyone is learning and growing. And that's what this partnership is about. So I hope, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'm urging that the board approves this idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more?
One more. And Gwen Phillips, please.
Well, it's been a long time since I've been here. I know almost all of you. I was the longtime leader at Open Alternative School. In fact, played the leadership role in starting the school in nineteen seventy-five. And Mary Ann and I met when we were supervisors at UCSB, supervisors of student teachers, and we right away had an affinity. And we have long had Antioch student teachers at O A S, and it is a perfect match, just a perfect match. And it can only be good for the school district to be hooked up with Antioch, and it certainly would be good for O A S, the children, and for the student teachers. So I'm excited about it. I think it would be a wonderful thing, and I hope you go for it.
Thank you. And this concludes public comment.
Well, thank you all for coming. I feel like we have the history of O A S right here in front of us, which is really a rich history. Mr. Heron, did you have a comment?
I'll just make a comment in general and take this in the right way. I totally expected to have background information because nothing was attached to the agenda. Both of these topics we just heard about, for me, would have been much better if I had background information talking about the program. It's hard for me to assimilate all of this verbally. It's probably even harder for the public who only see an agenda item. So I would prefer to see more background papers, and maybe this is another one to, just outline the whole program in a board brief so we have a little bit more rather than just seeing a contract come before us in two weeks.
You got it.
Any other board comments?
Well, I will, I'm assuming that the contract will talk about how many of the, how many individuals we'll have from Antioch on the campus and how many potential students would be served. I know that in a former capacity, I worked with New Beginnings Counseling Center, who actually used to run high school groups for females and for males, and I found those to be really useful. And I know that those no longer exist in our schools, so I actually really appreciate the value of bringing in different types of programs or services and resources that would help our students and families because I think ultimately they also help families in the mental health area. So I'm glad we're exploring that.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I would also just like to add my voice to say that I think it sounds like a really, an excellent fit. I mean, I know a lot of you, and I just think that it sounds like it really works well in terms of the connection between Antioch and O A S. And Ms. Phillips, it's great to have you back in the boardroom. You can come anytime you want. And so I just want to support that, and I also want to make sure that these folks are aware that it's on our conference agenda tonight, which means we would not be voting on it. It would be coming back to us again. So it's, I mean, I think that we've given you some direction in terms of what we would like to have from you before it comes back to us, but I would just like to say that it sounds like a great idea to me.
I agree. And I also am really pleased with this notion of more practical experience on the part of teachers that was alluded to because I think that it's something that should have been happening long ago, and although in the more traditional sense, we have always had student teachers, in this particular realm, we haven't. And it really benefits not only them as pre-professionals, but the students as well. And so I think we've all kind of acknowledged it sounds like a beneficial relationship for both entities. And so we do look forward to learning a little bit more about specifics, but I personally am looking forward to it, and it sounds like the rest of the board is as well. So thank you all so much for coming this evening. And we're actually going to move on now to item three on our conference agenda. And we're actually going to move on now to item three on our conference agenda, which is an update on our strategic plan. And for those of you in the audience who are here and would like to say this might prove to be an interesting discussion as well. I asked Dr. Cash to put this on the agenda because we are now in the midst of holding our second round of kind of fact gathering and input gathering at our school sites. And two of the high schools, Santa Barbara High and Dos Pueblos High School, have had recent evening meetings for parents and community members. And there's one at San Marcos High School this Thursday at six o'clock, also the same night as the vice presidential debates, but people can tape those if they want to do both. And so, I thought this would be a good opportunity for the board to weigh in as well and to give Dr. Cash some of our thinking about the shape of the strategic plan moving forward. We are having a special board meeting on, now I think it's October 25th, is that correct? On the strategic plan. But we, I think it's useful to talk more than less about this and so, I asked for us to have a discussion briefly this evening about it and gather more input from board members about your vision of the strategic plan and what, what form we could provide input to Dr. Cash and the task force in terms of the thoughts of board members. So, I would, I'd like to entertain any comments now from my fellow board members.
Can we have a brief update as to where the project stands and sort of a reaction to the community meetings and input you're getting?
Absolutely. We are on public draft two, which is on our website, which hopefully will be soon on the whiteboard there.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Okay. We are also very close actually to releasing public draft three, which will be an updated version based upon feedback that we have received since July. The process started in January. We had meetings in January, February, March, April, May, June with the Strategic Planning Task Force, which is a pretty large group of individuals from all kinds of stakeholders, both internal and external to our school district. And then, we, in addition to that, we have had it on the front page of our website and have received hundreds of comments electronically and through the snail mail as well. Those comments have been shared with the Strategic Planning Task Force when we have received them. This past spring, I went out to Dos Pueblos, San Marcos and Santa Barbara High Schools on three separate evenings and held community meetings and received input from the community, brought that back to the Strategic Planning Task Force as well to get, to inform them of the input that had been received. As you could well imagine, with that much input coming into a single document, sometimes it's hard to track all the changes or to even acknowledge all the potential bits of input because, as you might imagine, there will be conflicting input. Do this, don't do that. Do this more, why are you doing that at all? Use this word, I don't like that word, why are you using that word? Use another word. So, trying to be as sensitive as possible to kind of the collective input has resulted in a, in this document, which is draft two. And draft three will be a document that's going to be fewer words reflective of the additional input that we've received in the most recent two community meetings and it will also include input from the San Marcos Community Meeting. And it will be also aligned with, or will at least call out the board's focus goals, the mission of the district as well. This theory of action has been removed. The six aims remain. And so, I'm interested in your input on how you might want to see it organized. My plan at this particular point would be to send to you before releasing the public draft number three, just the framework of it, what it looks like so that you could look at it. And we do have, the task force meets again on October 17th. And then, we have scheduled a special board meeting to address the strategic plan on October 25th. By and large, the input that I have received at the community meetings mostly has been, wow, it sounds really good. It's been very positive. Most of the input I get electronically has been the same. Wow, looks really good. I can say that we have heard from lots of teachers, and I mean lots. I was shocked by how many teachers. We have several schools that have had their departments, then our secondary schools, meet and discuss the elements of the plan and then submit input from their department, which has really been great to get, also very informative.
We do have one public comment. Maybe we'll take that before we move on to discussion.
We do. Lourdes Zuribe. Wait, think step, okay.
Good evening. My name is Lourdes Zuribe. I'm here just to make a brief comment about what Dr. Cash is doing at the, at those meetings. First of all, I would like to express that he does very good presentations. He is smart and articulate and even me, you know, can get what his intentions are as presenting all these ideas. As I was sitting there at DP with very few parents, a lot of Latino parents, I must add, I was just thinking in my head, Dr. Cash, Board of Education, if all these ideas, I believe their ideas still, you know, would be in place right now or 20 years before when my kids start school, I wouldn't be here constantly begging you about my attorney's fees. I wouldn't be doing, trying to do this mediation and hearing application because I do honestly believe, I didn't know in what comment I was going to speak. I thought it was going to be public. My kids are waiting for me. They're thinking I'm late, but I decided to stay to do it here. I think it'll be great when all these things come to happen, but I, I'm very concerned. You know, all these aims talk about future things that are going to happen. My concern is for my children and also for other kids that are out there that are still need all these things. I would like to tell you two things that I've been wanting my kids to do that are in this paper. I was astonished when I read this because I said in my mind, he is thinking right. Dr. Cash and the Board of Education or whoever is coming up with this plan are thinking about my children. The reason why I have 20,000 attorney's fees is because I was asking, you know, something that it says here about the holistic health of kids, you know, sorry, I'm just, I'm just bad. Meeting the holistic needs of students changes in traditional school day. Monday, Wednesday, Friday classes with tutoring. The other one-
Thirty seconds.
The other one is online classes, online classes for students. It will be wonderful if those things come to happen for my grandkids, maybe when I come back, when I have grandkids here. We need help, you know, with students soon and I appreciate Dr. Cash. It says also here that parents are the most important partners. I noticed something. I came in the meeting in between two English-speaking people.
Time.
The person that was handing the papers to the laypeople, handed to the English-speaking people and I had to come and ask to the person for those papers. That is a small example of how, you know, people like me, Latino, English, Spanish-speaking or whatever are overlooking this district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Zuribe.
So, I would like to ask board members if we can provide Dr. Cash with some direction in general terms, and I know, again, we will be having this two-hour special board meeting about this, but I think any input that we can provide in terms of format, those kinds of things will be useful at this point since the third draft is getting ready to be put together at this point. Mr. Heron?
I have attended the first two sessions at Dos Pueblos and last Monday night, I think it was Monday night, at Santa Barbara High School. And I can tell you that at Dos Pueblos, for sure, it was a big sigh of wow, which sounds great. But attached to that is, how can it be done? How can you do all of these things simultaneously? Where are the resources going to be? Almost like it's just an impossible task. And I have to assure them that we have Dr. Cash, you know, and he'll get it done. You know, that's just the vision that Dr. Cash has and his team will make it happen. So, it's going into it with that attitude that these things can be done and many of them will be done not because of money, they'll be done because our people want to do them. And the six aims are very good. Comment last night was, put it in more English, common man's English, not educationese. And there did appear to be some duplications or overlapping. I'm sure you're going to be working, working on that. I think it was obvious at the two meetings that a little bit more on special education intertwined in it would be good. The, I'd just say, the general reaction that I saw was very positive.
Ms. Limone?
So, I guess for me, the document itself, I think, is going to come back to us in a different format. And it likely, I'm guessing, will include both kind of a long narrative for the board to have, but also maybe a condensed version that I, I saw the one you did in Clovis. So, I'm thinking of this and I'm thinking of that one, so I don't know that the rest of the board members have seen that, but. So, I wanted to share, I think, what I think is happening because first and foremost, I don't think the board deserves credit for this particular document. I think that Dr. Cash and the community have actually put this together. And so, I am very thankful to every single person who has emailed Dr. Cash, who has called Dr. Cash and who has attended each of the meetings because I think that that's where the feedback is coming from. And for me, I definitely see this document as paving the way, setting a direction for us. I think there are so many things happening in our schools, in education in the state and education nationally, that we can go in a lot of different directions and they're all directions that are needed. But I think that this sets the direction for our district in a more concise way and in a very collaborative way. So, what I believe is coming forward to us is really just that direction. I have, I too have heard a little bit about, is this realistic? Is this possible? Are we setting our expectations too high? And I think that for the sake of our students, we do need to have high expectations. Our goals need to set, be set high so that we can move in that direction. If we come short of that, well, at least we know we are walking in the right direction. If we supersede our goals, then that's even better. But I definitely think that it's a lot. I think it's a lot to ask for in this day and age in education, but I think we have to have a goal and a vision that's in line with what our students need. So, that's what I think is coming forward to us on the 25th. And I do look forward to seeing the final product and again, I'm very thankful to the entire community who has given us input or given the district and Dr. Cash input.
Mrs. Cordero.
Well, I want to echo what Ms. Limone just said as well. I certainly agree that the board has not been responsible for this, although I, I think we have perhaps given Dr. Cash some input, but primarily it's come from Dr. Cash, other district personnel and the public who have attended the meetings and emailed. I'm, I want to go back sort of to, how are we planning to use the document? What do we want it to serve as? And so, one of the functions of a strategic plan, I think, is just, is the process of actually creating it. Because in that process of creating the strategic plan, you actually identify, sorry, identify the goals and priorities for a district and put them into language, put them into writing so that we kind of all agree on what they are. I think very often, once that's done, they sit on a shelf somewhere, in this case, maybe, you know, sit in the, you know, biosphere somewhere and/or the, what is it, the cloud somewhere, and kind of get ignored. So, I think we want to decide, or I hope we would decide, what we want to use this for because I think that will also influence the format in which we would like it to be, to exist. So, I would like to see kind of a, a bit of a narrative. Hopefully, I actually would prefer, and I usually like narratives, but I would prefer for this to not have an overly extensive narrative because I think that actually dissuades people from reading through it. And then, perhaps a kind of an executive summary of, and by that, I really mean more like an outline, of the, maybe just listing the six aims and the goals under each aim without all the strategies and then the actual document so that it's very kind of user-friendly because I'm hoping that members of the public would actually be interested in reading it. I'm hoping that the board will have an opportunity to use it in making decisions and certainly that the individual campuses would use it to make decisions. So, I would like it to be in as readable a format as possible and to have kind of as many components as it needs in order to make it easily usable.
That's, I think that's great advice and direction. And my reaction, I think, is similar where this is clearly a very ambitious document as it necessarily would be given how much input you've received, but in order for it to be actionable, it's going to have to be consolidated and streamlined. And I know you're working with Ms. Limone, Dr. Cash and Mrs. Parker, or will be in terms of kind of crafting the document because they're kind of functioning in that role as board members as well. But we've seen scope of these so different from district to district. The one I'm most familiar with is actually the Galleta one, which, which really homed in on a differentiated instruction and that was pretty much the strategic plan. And ours is so much more broad and of course, we're a K-12 district. But I, I do, I guess my feedback also is, is that it needs to be a document that is easily understood and easily executed, even though the path to get there may be hard, at least we know what the steps are and that we're able to measure our success through those steps by how we've delineated what they will be. So, that would be my primary feedback, but I, I think it's, it's great and I like the fact that it does incorporate and dovetail with our board focus goals, with our goals for you because those are all a part of one set piece and so, we all want to be working together in that same direction. And this is a big charge to ask you to consolidate, I think, all of this or at least to streamline it so that, that people can really use it effectively and efficiently, but that would be my, my hope. Mr. Heron?
And at some point, I presume there'll be a timeline of what's going to be done in six months, what's going to be done within a year, within two years, within three years, so that some accountability built into it. And then, the money aspect of it, funding, which items are going to take money, which ones and how much money, or can't be that specific, but a lot of it can be done, maybe, I mean, what else are we going to, what are we going to take off the table to accomplish? I mean, what are we doing now that doesn't fall within this that we can look at and say, hey, this is no longer something we want to do, let's focus on this strategic plan? So, I presume there's things that we're currently doing that won't fall within these parameters that we'll take a second look at. Because this is an awful- Because this is an awful lot to add to everything else we're doing with core standards.
I noticed, there actually are timelines associated with a number of these items.
No, but I mean a document that clearly spells out, you know, you got a one year here, two years here, three years here. Well, put all the one years together, all the two years together, all the three years together.
Right, I, I, that's reminding me of the special ed plan that we had where, with this incredible tracking report. But you're right, and I guess one of the questions that I had was, when does year one start? Is that with the formal adoption of the plan? I mean, some of these things we're already doing, I know.
Yes, it would be after the board has adopted the plan. Some of the items note that this is the base year for data collection. So that wouldn't change, because there wouldn't be, have been no treatment during this year for many of the things that are identified there. So it would be a legitimate base year to begin collecting data for the school climate issues. This would be a base year for that. From this year, then, we would measure the interventions that we implemented as to their effectiveness.
Okay, well, I, as Ms. Cordero mentioned, the process alone, I think, is incredibly valuable in that we've got a lot of stakeholders involved, and it gives them a chance to be a part of their community's school district. Mr. Herron?
Just one thing, I made a comment at the meeting last night that in ref, in, in thinking about it, it doesn't belong in the, in this plan regarding ongoing maintenance. And I'll just talk to Dr. Cash about that privately.
The facilities piece, you mean, or?
The maintenance, the general maintenance plan. It's in, I forget what goal of it.
I, I saw it in there.
Under facility, right.
Yes, Dr. Cash?
So in, one of the, one of the, I'll speak for the task force. One of the underpinnings of developing it like this was that there are specific actions that only our facilities department would be responsible for. It won't be something that would be curriculum and instruction, or elementary or secondary leadership, or student pupil services, or special ed, it would just be facilities. Another is in fiscal innovation, which really will be the province of our business services division. So that's kind of why that was done, done in that manner, clearly delineating that there are specific areas in the district that will be solely or primarily ninety percent responsible for anything under that. There are some things that will be across the board that will all be responsible for, but much of it is broken out into kind of specific area, focus, areas or locus, I've got English teachers here, man, I'm in trouble, of control or influence. So with the idea that, that they, that they will facilitate the work with the community in developing the, the specific action plans to meet the goals and outcomes that have been identified in the strategic plan, they would be coming forward at a board meeting saying, okay, here are the outcomes that you've approved in the strategic plan. Here's what we're going to do and how we're going to hold ourselves accountable, here's our accountability. You know, for example, let's, I'll just take facility since it's on the table. You know, one of the things is a large facility master plan. So what that looks like wouldn't be the Strategic Planning Task Force that would do it. It would be Dave Hett Young and the people that he works with, developing the, and then they would come forward and say, okay, here's what the plan looks like, here's going to be our indicators of success. What we would like to do, get input from the board, yes, no, we want a painting schedule, we don't want a painting schedule, we think whatever that might be. And then I would, I will bring him forward when we do get to that point, periodic reporting on progress, whether that's done quarterly, whether it's done three times a year, whether it's done twice a year, would be up to you as to how you wanted to see it and how often you wanted to hear from the, the individuals that would be responsible for that. But I think that's the only way to do it. There was a very intelligent individual who I wanted to be on the Strategic Planning Task Force that you recommended, whose words of wisdom to me, which are ones that I've shared with the task force and I think about often, and that is, a poorly written plan fully executed is much better than a beautifully written plan never executed. And so for us, it's going to be the constant attention to execution of whatever the outcomes are. And, you know, when I talk about a strategic plan, for me, it really is setting the bar high, having goals, and then marshaling resources to attain those goals. And what, there will be things that will fall by the wayside. But there will also be this incredible, I think, synergy from the community, where people really want to support the schools and have been looking, how can I plug in and really devote myself, my own personal resources or fiscal resources that I may have to, in a particular direction? Now, I hope at the end of the process, we'll say, I see, okay, that's, that's an important goal. The board has decided, I want to be part of that. And I think that's exciting, because I, I really think, because of how many people have contributed to it, that there's, while there's a lot of people that don't, haven't contributed to it and, and don't know about it, there's a whole lot that have, that I think have some sense of ownership about whatever the final product's going to be. And I think that's really cool. What's really been incredible, everybody that we have interviewed for jobs, the ones that I've interviewed, so that's teachers on the certificated side and classified managers, every single one comes into the interview and talks about the strategic plan. Yeah, they've looked at it, they talk about it, here's what's interesting to me, I really liked this part of it. And I've heard people say, gosh, it's great, I can't believe how much of the community is involved in it. So that's been, that's been really interesting to get, that's a completely unintended consequence or input on the strategic plan. So looking forward to continued conversation, looking forward to presenting a final one for your approval at some point in the near future.
Great, and I'm, I'm going to go to San Marcos on Thursday, because I, it's nice to hear firsthand what, what, what parents and members of the public have to say. And, and of course, we do have a whole special workshop where we've thought of anything else, and I'm sure we will have, we will bring those ideas as well on the twenty-fifth. So I think that probably concludes our discussion of this item. And what I would like to do now is give us the opportunity to talk about coming events. I guess we've just mentioned the strategic planning session. Any other coming events that we want to make note of right now?
We will have for you, we either do or will have for you very soon, all of the fall theater arts productions, because they've, they've casted their shows and they're, we got to hear that last night, Mr. Herron, at Santa Barbara High School of some of the rehearsals, because we were in the theater. So we'll bring forward that for you, absolutely.
Ms. Limone?
And I think this came up, but I do want to remind the audience one more time that tomorrow there is a rally to support measures A and B in the community, starting at three forty-five. And on Saturday, the San Barbara Education Foundation will have their annual, is it annual?
It is, the Hope Awards.
Their annual Hope Awards, so.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that, I'm going to be introducing the women's fund, which I'm also a part of, so really looking forward to that. That brings us to future agenda items, Ms. Cordero, oh, did you want to have it?
I'm sorry, I just wanted, I know we had said this earlier too, but I don't think we mentioned the time, because on our, the bottom of our agenda, it says that we will be having a special board meeting on the eighteenth, but that has been changed to the twenty-fifth. And it says that it will start at six, but that has been changed to five. So if, if people have the, the agenda, the printed agenda, you might want to note those revisions.
Thank you for mentioning that. Future agenda items, I, I suspect it's because it's still early in the school year, but I know the board always enjoys having students come to our board meetings. And I don't know if the ASB student reports are in, in the works, but I, I certainly enjoy hearing from those and, and any student groups that, you know, we'd like to learn more about and, and see them here in person. I think that's something that we, as a board, enjoy, and it's nice for members of the public to also be exposed to what our students are doing. So I would just like to suggest that, that perhaps we could line up some, some of those in the future. Ms. Limone?
I think we had talked at the last meeting about having Mr. Rickman come forward to give the board a presentation on what EDU is, so I suspect that will come up. And then another item that I'm not sure that we'll have a lot of information about this month, but is, I'd like to know a little bit more about the implications of AB 2193, which is the long, long-term English learner bill that was recently passed. I'd like to know just how many students that would apply to in our district and really what the implications are for our district on something like that. So I'd like to see that come forward.
There's, and there's also, and, and Dr. Cash, I know you had communicated with us about some new laws passed recently regarding charter schools. And I suspect that will be part of our conversations going forward, but that's definitely something that I think the board and the public will probably want to be, become better informed about. Okay, well, Mr. Herron?
Along with that, there was another piece of legislation that eventually makes sixty percent of the evaluation test scores, the other forty percent is some other category, and maybe we could have a discussion on that at some point, too.
Right, and, and of course, test, I think the whole board is anxious about the public release of, of our test, our, our student test scores, and.
I think you'll be happy.
Well, that's good, and I'm sure that we will definitely look forward to having that coming up very soon on the agenda. Mrs. Cordero?
I was just wondering if there were, if we had had any of the visits from the drug dogs?
I asked that question, Mr. Sumner and I ask that question all the time, have we had any yet?
I've asked the administrators to report to me when they have a visit, I have not received a report, I've questioned that twice. We've, I've seen a reduction already, though, in the number of controlled substance offenses. And a report by one administrator, when I asked them if they felt that might be a consequence or a result of the program, and he said that no doubt he's, he believes that because he's hearing students say they're afraid to bring it to school because of the dogs.
So we didn't really need the dogs at all, we just needed to say they might be coming. No, I, I agree, they, they'll, they're smart, those students, so they'd know sooner or later. But at any rate, that is the intended goal.
Wait, and, and then I have, I have a question, and when, I think we did it last year, and I cannot remember, and I'm looking at the board, we used to do a round robin, what is?
The single plan for student achievement?
That's, okay, when, when does that happen?
That'll be in January. This year, if you'll recall, well, typically it happens in the fall, but this year, if you'll recall, the, I mean, typically, the APIs we would have had in August, so we're two months behind schedule. And, and that was because of some issues in relationship to school districts up in Northern California and their test scores. So that, that whole process was delayed from August until Thursday. And so because of that, President Deacon and I have been communicating about when to schedule the single plans, and so they'll be in January.
And just for the public to know what it is, is we have this like round robin session with all of the adminis, the principals of all the school sites. And it's actually really useful, it's really fast, but you get to talk to several at the time, so that's why I refer to this meeting, like.
Mrs. Cordero?
I just wanted to, well, it hasn't always been a round robin format, and we.
It was our first year last year, and that came with Dr. Cash.
We raised some concerns about that format, so I will not be on the board when those come forward, but you may want to revisit some of our concerns.
We, we have been having that discussion, I think I referred to it at one point, as a speed site plans, single plans, but it, I think in general, it was, it was much better than a dry presentation. And, and I'm hoping, in fact, Dr. Cash told me that the principals much preferred that and the opportunity to interact in these very small settings with, with board members. And by, by holding off until January, that'll actually give the new board members a real intimate experience, exposure to the details of each individual site, which I think is really useful for them. And it gives the sites the opportunity to meet with their ELAX, their site councils, once the data is released regarding test scores and all that. So January seemed to make sense, so it is coming, but not till the beginning of next year. All right, I think we have now exhausted all of our future agenda items for this evening, and so we are going to adjourn.